2007 Planning Commission Meeting, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary of Police call roll?
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Lunn?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Chair Wall? Absent.
I'd like to make an announcement that Chair Janet Wall obviously is absent with a brush fire going on in the Westlake area. It's near her house, so obviously she's tending to that. So for the first part of our meeting tonight, we will defer that until the next meeting that she can come and we can give her commendations and comments and those type things. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes of January 8th, 2007? Commissioner Reynolds?
Move approval of the minutes of January 8th, 2007.
Vote, please.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Okay, now I will turn the meeting over to Deputy Community Development Director Mark Towne.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fisher. At this time, I would like to open the... I'd like to announce that we'll be having the oath of office for our new Commissioner, Mr. Al Adam, as well as the two reappointed Commissioners. And Linda Lawrence will be doing that at this time.
If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm
I, California
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties, upon which I am about to enter. Okay, if I could just have you sign your own.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. First of all, I'd just like to clarify and state for the record that, of course, the two Commissioners that were just reappointed to new terms are our own Tina Grumney and Darrell Reynolds. So we're very pleased to have them back on the Commission, as well as Mr. Adams. So welcome aboard. At this time, I would like to open nominations for the Chair for the Planning Commission for 2007. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, thank you. It is my pleasure that I nominate Commissioner Barry Fisher for the position of Chair of the Commission.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. Will you please vote?
Motion passed, 4-0, or 5-0.
Then at this time, they're going to reorganize our seating arrangement for a moment, so if I may ask your patience.
Okay, we'll go to the next part of the agenda, nomination and election of Vice Chair. Commissioner Lunn?
I'm pleased to nominate for Vice Chair Commissioner Reynolds.
Any other nominations? No? Vote, please.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Okay. Congratulations. Okay, go to the next part of the agenda, comments by Commissioners and the Chair. I'll go ahead and start. I'd like to welcome Commissioner Adam to the Planning Commission. And congratulations to Commissioner Grumney and Reynolds coming back on. Looking forward to a very productive year and look forward to working with all of you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Reynolds?
And I would like to congratulate you, Chair Fisher, on your election. I know that you're going to run the meetings real well and we'll be out of here fast. And I also would like to congratulate our new Commissioner, Al Adam. I'm sure that you'll enjoy working with Commissioners. We work hard, we play fun, and I'm sure that you'll enjoy being on the Commissioner. And also to my fellow reappointee, Tina Grumney, it's been a pleasure working with you this past year and look forward to four years.
Ms. Lunn?
Well, I'm not reappointed and I'm not sitting in a Chair position, so I'm a lone Commissioner here. But I wanted to congratulate you, Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Reynolds, for your respective Chairs and Vice Chair position. A welcome to our newest Commissioner. I think we will have a very interesting and hopefully fun time here together. Welcome to the dais. Look forward to working with you. And Tina, welcome aboard again.
Commissioner Grumney?
Again, Mr. Adams, I welcome you to the Planning Commission. I really look forward to working with you.
Commissioner Adams?
Well, thank you very much for the warm welcome from everyone. And congratulations to our new Chair, Chair Fisher, and our Vice Chair, Darrell Reynolds. If you indulge me for just a moment, I'd just like to tell you a little bit about myself. I was talking to Darrell before the meeting. This is my 30th year in Thousand Oaks. Moved here in 1977. I think Darrell's got me by five years. And Tina, even longer. Oh, my. So we're all old timers up here. And I know in that time that I've been here, I've seen the population of Thousand Oaks go from 60, 70,000 to what it is now. And, you know, the city's changed a lot. It really has. When I think back of some of the things I used to do when I first moved here, like drive down the freeway and look to the right where the Civic Arts Plaza is right now and see camels and other exotic animals and wonder, what the heck is that? But as we all know, that was Jungleland. And, you know, you drive down T.O. Boulevard and the Oakdale Market was there. You'd go in, buy some groceries, and see some of the letters from some of the celebrities that had filmed movies here and thank Charlie for letting them shop at his store. You'd go into T.O. Meat Locker and maybe you'd bump into Ronald Reagan, who used to be a customer there. I know I went on a date with my wife to Melody Theater, which is where TGI Fridays is right now. And then afterwards, of course, you'd always could go to Dupont's, which was the place to be in Thousand Oaks. I remember they filmed Selma and Louise there. Caneo Valley Days was big. Everybody in town was always on a committee to work Caneo Valley Days. Everybody would wear Western gear at work and the whole town would go Western for a week. And a lot's happened in 30 years. A lot is still here that's the same. The Hungry Hunter, Carlson's, J.C. Plumbing, the Dewitt Center, all the great local businesses, Loopy's, they're still here. But a lot's changed, too. And I'd just like to thank all the Commissioners and Council members that came before me in this last 30 years for shaping this city into what it is today. And I just want to tell you I'm very honored, I'm very privileged, to be able to just have a little bit of say in maybe how the city's going to appear in the next 30 years. So, and if I may, I'd just like to extend some personal thanks first to my family, to my wife Marilyn, and to my two girls, Allison and Erica. You know, it was great to get a 5-0 vote from the Council for approval to this position, but the real vote that I needed was 3-0 from the family. And I did get the 3-0 votes, so thank you. You don't have to clean your rooms for a week, girls. All right? I do want to thank, you know, our outgoing Chair, Janet Wall. She's done a tremendous job, been here for four years. I know she's not here and we're going to say some words about her at the next meeting, but by my calculation, that's about 90 meetings that she attended over the four years. And she worked hard, she's diligent, she's responsible, and courageous, too. You know, it's not always easy being the one on a 4-1 vote. But she voted her principles and that's what counts. I'd like to thank, and a lot of these people can't be here tonight unfortunately because of this fire, but I'd like to thank Supervisor Linda Parks as well. She's a great public servant, works hard, represents her constituents very well, sets the bar high for a public servant, and I'd like to thank her for the inspiration she's given to a lot of people, including myself. And finally, the Council member that appointed me, Claudia Bell de la Peña, who's also close to this fire tonight, but if she was here, I'd tell her, thanks for the vote of confidence, Claudia. Here's a woman who works a full-time job, is raising two twin boys, and is an effective, eloquent member of the City Council. It's amazing what she does. We're lucky to have her. And finally, I'd just like to conclude by saying that, you know, I feel part of my job up here is that I need to do things like protect our environment, protect and defend the quality of our city, the quality of our life, open space, our oak trees, building heights, all the things that go in to make this a great town. There's one other thing I think that we all represent here, and that would be community values. I think we're a mirror for the community values that surround us. So I would say to all the residents and all our neighbors, feel free to come down to this forum. This is your forum. We're your friends. We want to hear what you have to say because we need that input to help make decisions, to help reflect the community values that surround us in this town. So with that, that's all I have to say, and I thank you all again. I'm ready to get to work.
Great, welcome again, and I wouldn't get used to those 3-0 votes at home anytime soon.
Yeah.
I'm sure they just gave you one.
That was a reality.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments on the new Commissioner. We'll start with Marilyn Adam.
Congratulations, Al. You look great. My name is Marilyn Adam, and it is a great honor for our family to have Al be able to serve the City of Thousand Oaks. We're looking forward to hearing all kinds of good stories. I've been married to Al for 15 years. We'll celebrate our 15th wedding anniversary this year. And I feel lucky to have him, and I believe that the City of Thousand Oaks is lucky to have him as well. So, way to go, Al.
Erica Adam.
Hello.
Hi, Dad.
Hi.
I'm very proud of my daddy. He worked hard to be on the Planning Commission, and I'm glad he did it. Thank you.
Thank you, honey.
And last but not least, Allison Adam.
Hello? I'd like to congratulate my excellent daddy on getting on the Planning Commission. I think it's a miracle. Thank you.
Thank you, honey.
We'll have to talk later on that last comment there. Okay, we're going to hold a short recess to have a public reception out here in the lobby area, so please join us. Join new Commissioner Al Adam and the two remaining Commissioners. Thank you. Welcome back to the January 22nd, 2007 Planning Commission Meeting. We will move on to public comments. I don't see any public comments. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. I don't have any cards for public comment, just on the actual cases. Okay, we'll go to item number nine, written comments, announcements, and continuances. Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Chair Fisher, force of habit. Now, there's a good start. As we were saying, we do have a supplemental packet tonight, and all of the Commissioners should have that. What it contains is one letter regarding Case 10C. It's a condition that we are recommending that the Commission add to that project at such time as you consider it. Secondly, I would like to say that in your packet, relative to Case A, we have a recommended continuance. This is on page 17 of your packet. And this is a continuance to allow the applicant a chance to discuss a matter with a resident in the vicinity of the proposed project. We are recommending that this item be continued to a date certain, to February 12th, so that you will be hearing this in just about three weeks' time, should you choose to continue it. And that's all I had.
Okay, you had a motion for Case 10A to continue. Commissioner Lunn?
I move to continue Case 10A to a further date, February 12th, 2007.
Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
The Secretary, please call Case 10B.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B... I'm sorry, 10B, regarding Case AA 2006 70517. Applicant, Alan and Rochelle Rashkin, request to allow the construction of first and second floor additions with a deck and a detached accessory building in the rear yard of an existing two-story, single-family dwelling. Location, 2130 Sapress Street. Recommendation, approve with conditions.
Mr. Chang, you're presenting.
Thank you, Chair Fisher and members of the Commission, for your consideration tonight and AA application that's been filed, requesting for your review. And if you can turn your attention to the screen. And the project location is at 2130 Sapress Street, and it requests to allow construction of a two-story addition and a detached accessory building to existing two-story, single-family dwelling. And what the applicant is proposing to do is to add a living room, kitchen, and game room on the first level. On the second level, the applicant is proposing to add additional bedrooms and bathrooms. And in addition, applicant is also proposing to add about 200 square feet detached accessory building in the rear yard area. This is the subject location, 2130 Sapress Street, and basically it's at the end of the Sapress Street. And this is a street view of the existing residence. And basically, a residence above the street level, which is, I don't know, hidden by a lot of landscaping at this point. And this is a partial front elevation where the existing dwelling is. And for project design, the applicant is proposing to add about 2,229 square feet and also 200 square feet of detached buildings. And the building height will be 25 feet, which comply with the municipal requirement. And so does the detached accessory building, which is 15 feet high. And the applicant is putting colors and material to match with existing dwellings. For staff recommendations, staffs recommending the Commission to approve this project based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff's ready for any questions you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening. We had a telephone conversation, Mr. Chang, and at the time I asked if their plans had been submitted to the homeowners association. Do you know if they have been?
According to our record, there was a record of an association within this tract. However, staff cannot find any contact information regarding this association. So if the applicant is present, maybe the applicant can explain whether the association is active or not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Mr. Chang, may I ask you a question, please? On the pool side of the home, the plans show that there would be a, if I'm reading this correctly, an eight-foot retaining wall built. And yet, it says in the conditions here that any proposed retaining or garden wall would not exceed six foot. Would that be that I'm just not interpreting the plans properly, or is there some differential there?
Sometimes when the applicant or when the designer proposed the project, they put eight-foot-high retaining wall. Sometimes they count whatever the footing and the foundation is. And what staff is recommending is maximum high six feet to be exposed. So whatever needs to be shown is six feet. And maybe you can clarify with the applicant whether that eight feet will be part of it buried underneath the existing soil. But staff does recommend for maximum six-five retaining wall to be exposed.
Thank you.
Any other Commission questions? Commissioner Grumney?
Hi, Mr. Lunn. I noticed directly across, there's a vacant lot. Can you tell me what the purpose of it or any plans for that lot directly across the street?
The lot that directly cross from this project location actually is Zone PL, stands for Public Land, and is, according to our latest accessory rule, is owned by the Caneo Recreation Park District. And so far, staff is unaware of any proposal at this point.
I have an additional question. Also, I was noticing that for that, there's a covenant and deed restriction that's and deed restriction that's included in this, for that additional, what do we call that? Accessory building. And the purpose of this is really in connection with parking, is that correct? So if they were to use that as a bedroom, or put a closet in there, then they would need to have additional garage space?
Actually, it's a standard city policy to impose a deed restriction for almost a lot of detached accessory building. The purpose is that, because for a lot of residential in Thousand Oaks, city does not allow a secondary dwelling to be detached from the main structure. And the purpose of the restriction is for the owner, and also future owner, to aware of that, the detached building cannot be, and should not be used as a secondary dwelling, and also will be on a record. So that's part of the reason why we require the applicant to do a deed restriction, so it would be on the title.
Okay, thank you. We have, we have separate requirements and standards if this was going to be a second dwelling unit. This is not going to be a second dwelling unit, because it would not meet those standards. So while the applicant can build an accessory building, or accessory unit, they cannot use it as a second unit, under our code. So we've recorded this deed restriction, so that if the applicant ever sells his or her house, any incoming buyer will also know that that unit cannot be used as a second dwelling.
Any additional questions? Okay. We will open the public hearing and go to the applicant. I've got one card, Mr. Don Buxar, representing the applicant. Mr. Buxar, please give us your name, city of residence, and you have fifteen minutes.
Thank you. My name is Don Buxar of New Dimensions. I reside in Encino, California. I'm representing, as an agent, the client, Dr. Rashkin and his wife Shelley. I want to first thank you of the panel for approving the administrative action so far for the design of the building. And the questions that were brought up this evening, as far as we can tell, there is no active home association whatsoever. We've done some research in it, but there's no one that's actively involved in anything. As to the question to the retaining wall, it'll be a six-foot retaining wall exposed. It's gonna be cut into the hill, so that'll answer the question about how much will be exposed. And we'll try to make it decorative at the same time. And as for the accessory building, there will be no plumbing. It's basically a storage building. The doctor is a fine craftsman. He collects model trains, and he wants to set up a little shop, and there's what it is, basically. I hope that answers your questions.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. We have no other comment cards for this particular project. Mr. Buxar, if you'd take a seat up front, we'll be back to you shortly. We'll go back to staff for any comments.
Staff has no comment at this time.
Mr. Buxar, I assume you don't have anything else to add?
Out of this time, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open for a commission discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. At this time, I'm pleased to see the addition and the accessory building. I think that they've met all the city regulations, and so at this time, I will move approval of AA two zero zero six dash seven zero five one seven, with, subject to the findings and the conditions as in the report.
Any comments to the motion? Commissioner Grimley?
I will be supporting the motion. I think that this is architecturally consistent with the neighborhood, and actually is going to be an improvement to the property, so I wish you a lot of luck on the project.
Any other comments? Okay, vote, please.
Motion passed, five zero.
Okay, there's a, through the record, there's a ten-day appeal period. Thank you. Will the secretary please call case ten C?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item ten C, regarding case RPMJ two thousand six seven oh five one eight. Applicant, Eileen McCarthy, request to allow the construction of a second-floor addition to an existing two-story attached townhome. Location, two three nine eight Windward Circle. Recommendation, approve with conditions.
Mr. Lynn, you're presenting.
Good evening, Chair Fisher, and members of the commission. For your second consideration this evening, I'm sorry, third consideration this evening, a major modification to our RPD application has been filed requesting a second-story expansion to existing two-story attached townhome. The proposed application involves an expansion of the dwelling's living area, which requires planning commission's approval. If I may direct your attention to the screen. Applicant, Eileen McCarthy, location is at two three nine eight Windward Circle. The proposed is to add a second-story family room. Location is at two three nine eight Windward Circle. This is the view of the front elevation. The proposed addition will be right above the garage area toward the front. The view of the right elevation, view of the rear yard. The second-story family room will consist of three hundred sixty-three square foot, and the maximum height is twenty foot and nine inches. Staff recommends approval based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions or comments.
Questions of staff? None? Okay, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Eileen McCarthy, please state your name and city of residence for the record, and you have fifteen minutes.
I moved to my townhouse with the white picket fence about two and a half years ago, and with nine grandchildren, it just isn't quite big enough. So I want a bonus room, family room, guest bedroom, and that's what the addition is for, a playroom for my grandchildren, and other things that I'll use it for. Hopefully, you approve it. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? None? We have no other public speaker cards, so we will go back to staff for any additional information.
No, sir.
Okay, I'm assuming Ms. McCarthy, you have nothing else to add? This is your rebuttal time, but, okay. Nothing additional? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open for commission discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Lynn?
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I'm pleased with the modest property improvement, and the purpose for which the property is going to be used for. It's very much consistent with the neighborhood, family room, bonus room for the kids. There, I'm also pleased that the homeowners association, no objections there, no waivers on this project, so I'm pleased to move approval of RPMJ zero six dash seven oh five one eight, subject to the attached conditions and findings, and the supplemental packet condition that we were provided with this evening.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Grimley?
I will be supporting the motion. But in addition, I just wanted to thank city staff for preparing that extensive background about all of the different changes that have happened within the community. That was really helpful, so thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, vote, please.
Motion passed, five zero.
Congratulations, and for the record, there's a ten-day appeal period. Will the secretary please call case ten D?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item ten D, regarding case, appeal of PPD two thousand five seven oh four seven two, referral of revised plans by city council. Applicant, Ristu and Angelica Belika, request to allow the construction of first and second-floor addition to an existing one-story, single-family detached dwelling. Location, one six 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 Sandalwood Place. Recommendation, recommend council approve the appeal based on revised plans with conditions.
Mr. Chang, welcome back.
Thank you, Chair Fisher, and members of the commissions, for your consideration tonight. We have a referral of revised plan by city council, and if you can turn your attention to the screen. And this project location is at one six 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 Sandalwood Place, and the purpose of this public hearing is to, for commission is to review the revised plans submitted by the applicant, and also the applicant, and also to make a recommendation to the city council whether or not to approve the appeal based on the review of revised plan. And this is the subject locations. And the request for the PPD two thousand five seven oh four seven two is to allow a first and second-story addition to existing single-family dwellings. And what the applicant is proposing to do is add office and bedroom expansion on first level, and also bedrooms and bathroom on a second level, and balcony at the back of the building. And this is what the, an original proposal, when the applicant was first submitted. And staff would like to provide a little background to the commission of this project. On January twenty-third, two thousand six, the application was denied by the planning commissions, and on January thirty-first, two thousand six, the applicant filed an appeal to city council. And on March twenty-first, the council meetings, council reviewed the project and referred the project back to the applicant for, to explore alternative design, and also have the planning commission to review and provide a recommendation before sending it back to city council. And basically, the city council will still retains the jurisdiction of this appeal, and the planning commission will just make a recommendation to the city council. And this is the front elevation of the house, and basically, the new proposal, the applicant will propose to have addition above the existing garage, and basically pushing the addition toward the front of the house, as suggested by the neighbors and also the council members. And this is a partial rear elevation. And this is the other partial rear elevations. And for the revised building plans, the applicant basically put the addition toward the front of the house, and also, the applicant is reducing the square footage. And applicant also removed balcony from the original proposed plan, as suggested by the neighbors and also council members. And for the stairs at the back of the buildings, the applicant is using a glass block window, which would be more like a translucent window, which doesn't even be, any type of privacy intrusion. And staff believe that the applicant will provide a sample at the meeting today to show the commissioner what kind of a windows he's gonna propose for that rear elevations. And for staff recommendation, staff is recommending the commission to make a recommendation to the city council to approve the appeal based on the revised plan submitted. And this concludes staff's presentation. Staff's ready for any questions you may have.
Questions to staff? Commissioner Lynn?
Good evening, Mr. Chang. Did you have the opportunity to discuss with the applicant condition number six, which refers to the transparent windows, and did you get in agreement with the applicant on that?
Staff did talk to the applicant this morning, as the applicant is aware of that condition, is, agrees with the condition as well.
Thanks, Mr. Chang.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Mr. Chang, have you heard from any of the neighbors regarding the revised plans?
Two of the neighbors who initially opposed the project did review the plans last week at the counter, and they haven't provided any feedback to the staff, but they have seen the plans, and they have seen the samples which provide by the applicant, with the glass block window which provided by the applicant.
Any additional comments? Questions? Okay. Okay, no additional questions. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll go to the applicant, Mr. Bileka. Mr. Bileka, you have fifteen minutes. Please state your name, city of residence for the record.
Good evening.
Mr. Bileka, will you be the main speaker? I have a card for you.
Basically, we're gonna speak very little, so. I'm Mr. Bileka. We live at sixteen sixty-six Sandalwood Place in Thousand Oaks, since nineteen ninety-six. Well, this is the second time we come in front of you. We congratulate you. Now you're the chair, Mr. Fisher, and we congratulate Mr. Adam as the new commissioner. And I would like to tell you that we addressed all the issues that you have told us, if you remember exactly a year ago, or almost a year ago. And here is the, basically, there are no balconies, there are no windows, and the only glass is at the staircase, and this is the glass. You don't see a thing. I brought it here. If you wanna take a look, ten feet away, you don't see a thing. I can see you. If you wanna take a look, please. Also, to respect to Mrs. Reynolds, yes, I sent to the neighbors the plan, that I specified to them that there are something like this, specifying that we're gonna put, it's called obscure glass, six by six by four, decorum premier series, Angela's Black Company. I sent them these two pictures showing that there are no windows. There's actually a setback on the second floor. This will be on the staircase. And also, I sent them this picture, which shows that the chair was ten feet away, and you can't see a thing through this, and I want you to take a look just, and that is all. Hopefully, you appreciate, I mean, hopefully you're gonna approve our plans. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lynn?
Good evening, sir, and welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Thank you.
I have a question in regards to, you said that you sent those plans to the neighbors. Did you have any personal conversation with them regarding the plan at all?
Well, Mr. Don, I don't wanna go into details, but I think you are aware that the neighbors don't wanna talk to us. We wanna talk to them. If you remember the fence, and, I don't wanna remember, it's not a pleasure for me to remember. I mean, we're nice to them. I, you should ask them what they have with us, but that's not our problem.
I do remember.
By the way, I would like to tell you something. We, I'm sorry, we just, we wanna repair the fence, 'cause now the fence, if you remember, is just wiggling, this winds, and we appreciate, we want to thank to Mr. Adam, has been to our residence, two days ago, I was not home, but my wife told me, so you could see the fence is just, and hopefully, they're gonna make a contribution. If not, we're gonna repair it anyway, because we care for privacy.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Adam. Commissioner Adam, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Bileka. I did visit the residents and spoke briefly with Mrs. Bileka. May I see the glass? Could you bring that?
Please, that's why I brought it here.
Bring that up, to take a look at it. And this is the glass that'll be on the stairway.
Yes, yes, upstairs, the same glass.
It's not too heavy? The viewing from the interior out will be obscured then?
You don't see anything outside. It's just the light that comes in, that's it. Just put it on forward. Try to look at me. You won't see me.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, of course.
It is obscured, isn't it?
The chair was ten feet away, and I couldn't see the chairs. It's pretty much obscure, but also allows the light. It's used at the hospitals, if you're aware, hospitals and buildings, and, 'cause the light gets in, but you can't look outside.
Yeah, I thought everybody might wanna take a chance to look at the glass.
Yeah, that's why I brought it here, so I want, I want you to make- Yeah, that's why I brought it here, so I want, I want you to make sure. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, Mr. Balaika, go ahead and have a seat. Mrs. Balaika, would you like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. Well, we're just expecting for a positive answer. We did all, we addressed all your concerns, so we really, truly think that you have to approve this plan. Thank you.
Any questions, Mrs. Balaika? No questions? We have no additional speaker cards, so we will go back to the applicant, Mr. Balaika. Or correction, staff, any comments?
Staff has no comment this time.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Balaika.
We really hope that you're going to approve our plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Balaika. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open for commission discussion or emotion. Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I remember the previous hearing, and it was a very long hearing, and we came up with some things, we were concerned with the balcony, and I was the one that talked about the windows in the stair, the stairs, the long windows that you had. I'm very pleased to see the redesign, and I'm also happy, I wish your neighbors were down here tonight supporting this. I'm glad that you contacted them, I'm glad that they came to the counter, but if Mr. Chang said that they did come to the counter, he hadn't received any comments, so I think no news is good news. And so, at this time, I would move that we recommend approve the appeal, but make the recommendation to the city council of the PPD 2005-70472. This is the revised plans, and with the conditions and findings attached. I'm sorry, I was looking at condition number six, but that's not new, that's in here, it was just one that I even noted too, so.
Comments to the motion?
And thank you for doing the redesign, and listening to the planning commission and the city council too, that I hope that your neighbors appreciate all the work, and I know the additional expenses that you went to to redesign, and I think it's a good plan now.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Adam.
Yes, I would be able to support that motion. I think the Balaikas have done quite a bit to address the privacy concerns of their neighbors. The opaque windows, the moving of the second story to the front of the house, the elimination of balcony, and not seeing any residents here this evening objecting, I think that the recommendation is good, and I'll support it.
Okay, I too will support the motion. You've done a great job redesigning this, and I think the neighbors should be happy with it. Any comments? Vote, please.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Congratulations. For the record, there's a Oh, no appeal, it's a recommendation to the council. Congratulations. Will the secretary please call case 10E?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 10E regarding case SUP 2006-70475. Applicant: Royal Street LLC, MetroPCS. Request to allow the installation of a wireless communications facility consisting of six panel antennas, one GPS antenna, and associated equipment on an existing Southern California Edison power pole. Location 1586 Peterson Road. Recommendation: Approve with conditions.
Mr. Chu.
Good evening, Chair Fisher, members of the commission. For your consideration tonight is an application by Royal Street LLC, or MetroPCS, requesting to allow the installation of a wireless facility on a existing Southern California Edison transmission tower. The applicant's request is to allow the installation of six panel antennas, a GPS antenna, and the equipment cabinet alongside, the equipment cabinet would be located adjacent to an existing wireless facility, which is Sprint. This is the proposed locations. As you see, Peterson is on the top of your screen. The distance from Peterson to the actual location is about 1,000 feet. And this is another site. For your clarification, I'm showing here the proposed location, the existing antenna. The antennas would be located on the west transmission tower, which is the one to the left, and the equipment cabinets would be located west of the existing cabinets. This is a view from the north side of the property, midway from the front of the property. The transmission tower to the left or to the right is where the antennas are going to be. And this is another view of the antennas. As you can see, on the right side of the screen is the existing Sprint facility cabinets. And this is a view from the east side of the property to the proposed location, which is around this area right here. The project qualifies for a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of the CEQA guidelines. The site meets the applicant's coverage needs. This site would provide the least visual impact because of the fact that there's already some cell sites out there. The site complies with FCC RF standards requirement, and therefore, staff recommends approval of SUP 2006-475 based on the findings and subject to conditions detailed in the staff report. Mr. Kramer, the city's wireless facility consultant, is here to answer any technical questions that you may have, and staff are ready to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions to staff? Commissioner Lynn.
Good evening. Just for points of reference, I believe your report says that the new proposed installation will be approximately 58 feet high at the center point. Is that, am I reading that correctly? Okay, in relation to the existing facility that's already there, where would that be? Would that be directly at the same height as the other one, below it, above it?
It's approximately the same level.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Adam.
Thank you. Is there a representative from Royal Street here this evening?
Yes.
There is, okay. Well, I'll ask you then, Mr. Chu, but I might want to ask the Royal Street people as well. As I read it, the existing array that's there already is about 43 feet up, and the one that is proposed to be put in, 25 foot away on the pole right next to it, is about 55 and a half feet. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's based on the, that's based on the previous installation. It's about 45 feet and 55 feet.
Well, what comes to my mind, and I guess I can either ask you or the applicant, is why the height differential? Why is the existing array 43 feet and the one 25 feet away, 55 and a half, for a difference of, what's that, about 12 feet or so? I would personally like to see the array as low as possible, considering it is along a scenic highway.
That would be, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe that might be a question I need to ask Royal Street as far as the feasibility of that.
And Mr. Kramer can also put in his input on that.
Good evening, Commissioner Adam, congratulations.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Kramer.
I'm Jonathan Kramer, I am the city's RF engineer for these projects, and I look at all of these projects I have for about over a dozen years, something like that. Sprint is an established carrier, actually, height hurts them, because when, the further up they go, the more adjacent cell sites they impact. MetroPCS, and by the way, MetroPCS and Royal Street, just for everybody's clarification, Royal Street is the FCC licensee, they operate under the trade name of MetroPCS, because there's typically confusion on that point. But Royal Street is a new carrier, they have no service now, so they're trying to maximize their coverage, and that's the primary reason for the difference in height.
Well, then, are you saying it would be less effective if it was lower?
Yes.
It would?
Yeah.
I see.
It's a trade-off between the number of sites and the coverage afforded from each site. And again, because we have a new entrant coming in, their coverage needs are substantially different than a mature carrier like Sprint.
Well, then, why would the existing array at 43 feet, I'm not sure I understand, why would that be effective, but the one at 55 and a half wouldn't be, why couldn't that be at 43 feet as well?
Sprint has a number of sites around the city already, so when they go up higher, they actually, as it were, see additional sites and cause interference. So they actually, Wireless 101, a cell system, when it comes to town, starts at very high levels in terms of altitude. The first city, the first sites in the city were actually up on Rasno Peak. And they migrate downwards as the networks grow by adding more cell sites. MetroPCS doesn't have adjacent sites to compete with, so they try to maximize their coverage, and that's why their build-out plan is different than Sprint's. And each carrier is a little bit different in terms of where they want their sites, they try and cover main thoroughfares like the 23 and the 101 and all of that. MetroPCS's approach is, they're actually an all-you-can-eat service, they have a flat monthly fee, so they're different too, so they have different coverage objectives in terms of wanting to cover homes as well as roadways. So each company has a different objective, and Sprint's in this case is certainly different than Metro's is.
Well, could this array be lowered at all?
The array could be lowered if the city is wanting to have more cell sites, because that's the trade-off. You have, lower array means less coverage per cell site, which means more cell sites.
I see, thank you.
Additional questions? Nope. Commissioner Reynolds.
I wanted to ask Mr. Chu if he's heard anything from any neighbors. Has anybody sent emails or calls or anything regarding this?
I received one call back in November, and I received another one this morning, basically just asking about what the application's about. That's about it.
Okay, and can you tell me when the photographs were taken that are in the packet? Only because now with the sound walls and the construction going on, there, you don't see them as much, or see the existing poles out there, I noticed, because of the walls, and I just wondered.
The pictures were taken on 10, let's see, on October, sometime in October, October 12th or 13th.
I'm sorry, it's right there on the report. Thank you.
And as a clarification, the cabinets for this are above ground, however, the reason why we allow them is because the distance and the grade of the property, so.
Any other questions? I've got one for Mr. Kramer. Is it, I guess, technologically possible for cell companies to share the same cell site? I mean, not necessarily an antenna on top of an antenna on the same pole, but actually use the same radio?
There are a couple of configurations where that happens. For example, right now, Singular and T-Mobile are sharing some facilities, although that agreement is ending, and that's been the subject of a number of applications before the commission over the years. But those are temporary agreements. There is one technology that allows sharing of the actual antenna panels called distributed antenna systems, but that's for very low-power sites, and that's not what this is. So that wouldn't be a replacement for this site. But the answer to your question is, yes, there is a technology that has some limited applications to do what you're talking about.
Is that being done in the city at all, that you know of?
We don't have DAS in the city. The closest is in Calabasas, where there's a distributed antenna system along the curvy parts of Mulholland, and that's simply to provide a quarter-mile, quarter-mile, quarter-mile of coverage. That's really an application for that type of technology.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing and go to the applicant, Tricia Knight, representing Royal Street LLC. Please state your name, city of residence for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
And I am representing Royal Street LLC, and I live in Pismo Beach, California. And let's see, looks like they did a great job of summarizing the project, just to answer a couple of your questions. Mr. Kramer is correct in his representation of why we aren't locating at the same center on the poles. But also, one way to look at it is the panel antennas, which ours are about a little bit over five feet long, and they, their power is what I consider to be like a flashlight beam. And being that we are approximately 25 feet away from each other, and the antennas do go all the way around the pole, we want to kind of want to stay out of their beam. We don't want to be shooting directly at that same level for that reason as well. But also, MetroPCS is a very new carrier to the area, and will need, it has a different technical consideration, as Mr. Kramer stated. So I'm here, I'm answered to any other questions that you might have this evening.
Questions? Commissioner Adam.
Yes, thank you. Hi, how are you tonight?
I'm very well, thank you.
I did visit the site and saw the two towers, and saw the existing array, and yeah, it's about 43 feet off the ground, and you proposed that yours be about 55 and a half. And there's 25 feet between the two poles, and each array would jut out about five feet.
Right.
And I do see what you're saying, if they were absolutely parallel with each other, their beams could coincide or something.
Shadow is what we call it, shadow each other, and that's never really good when it comes to that kind of technology.
Would there be any leeway at all to lower that array? Right now, there would be 12, about 12 and a half feet apart.
Another consideration also, I can surely check, but another consideration, the Southern California Edison, when we identify the site, we go out there with their engineers, there's probably 15 people at this particular walk, and they do mandate where they would like us to go on the tower. I don't know exactly why, exactly where Sprint ended up and why we ended up. Preferably, being that Metro is a new, this would alleviate the need for me coming before you for a brand-new facility somewhere else. This is a co-located area that is utilized very well by the existing carriers that are there, and this one site is going to probably alleviate the need for two others. So every time we come down and hide, that means there's going to be a hole, so when they start their network in Ventura, we're going to be back looking at other sites, both to the, you know, east and west, or north and south, whichever that hole is. So with this one facility, using an existing structure, we're able to accomplish that goal.
So you say Southern California Edison mandates the height?
That's correct, because they have certain service requirements to be able to know what they're going to be using in the future for that, if they're going to be doing anything with that pole in particular. But I don't remember there being a case of that, but I do know when we're out there, they tell us the, what we call the radiation center, or the RAD center, that is available to us when we are at that walk, and this is what they explain to us. So, and it might be actually that we want to stay out of the path of the other, the antennas on the other pole.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions? Okay. Thanks, Ms. Knight. We'll come back to you shortly. I don't have any other speaker cards, so we will go back to staff for additional comments.
Staff don't have any further comment.
Okay, Ms. Knight, you do have a rebuttal period if you want to use it.
Unless you have any other questions for me.
No other questions? Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, open to commission comments. Commissioner Grumney? Thought I saw a hand go up. Nothing. Okay. Commissioner Len?
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. We already have a cell site on this property. We're not breaking any new ground here. So with that, I move to approve special use permit 2006-70475, subject to the attached conditions and findings.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Adams?
Thank you. As I mentioned, I did visit the site. I happened to speak with the fellow that was running the Christmas tree concession. His only concern was that the equipment boxes would take up a little room where his trees would actually grow, but the space that they take up is relatively negligible. I guess I would just ask the maker of the motion if he could just include the potential that, if possible, the array be lowered, if possible. The speaker mentioned that she would check into that, and Southern Cal mandates the height. It is on the scenic highway. What blocks it from the freeway right now are some pepper trees. And as we all know, pepper trees don't last forever. And it's thirteen feet higher than the existing array, and if it could be lowered a number of feet, I think that that would be best for the city.
With all due respect to my fellow commissioner, I'm not willing to amend the motion at this point. I think that, you know, we here sit to take the information. I don't want to be...I don't want my motion to be confused with trying to regulate business. And I'm satisfied with the explanation as to why there's a difference in height. It makes perfect sense to me. So at this point, I'm not ready to make that amendment.
Any other comments, questions to the...to the motion? So for procedure, we...did you want to make a motion, Commissioner Adams?
Well, I suppose I would then motion that...and again, I'm not insisting that this happen. I'm just asking that it be explored, and if possible, without affecting the feasibility of the site, that a lowering of the antenna be looked into. And I think the speaker mentioned that, you know, she could do just that.
Just so I can clarify then, would your motion be something along the lines of a motion to add a condition that staff look into reducing the height of the antennas to the extent technologically feasible based on the city's technical advisor's recommendation?
Yes. Thank you.
Would that work, Mr. Kramer?
That would work. Perhaps even a simpler motion would be to a maximum height of...
Well, I think that we want more direction than just to maximum height. So it would obviously be a maximum height of, but just the condition would be to look into or to...whatever I just said. I can't remember.
Well, you put it just right. I mean, there's a minimum height that these have to be, and that's about thirty-three feet or so, but yeah.
So the motion would be to add a condition to direct staff and the city's consultant to look into reducing the height of the antennas to the extent technologically feasible based on our consultant's recommendation?
Thank you. That's exactly right.
And then now, before we vote on the full motion, you'll need to vote on this motion, whether or not to add this to Commissioner Len's motion. No, you can have comments and discussion.
Comments to Commissioner Adams?
I would concur to add that as an amendment to my original motion. Then we just proceed with the one vote. I accept that.
Yeah, if you accept it, then we can just go ahead without a full motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Len.
Any other comments to the motion? Okay, vote please.
Motion passed, five-zero.
There's a ten-day appeal period for the record. Let's go to miscellaneous items, reports, and referrals. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Chair Fisher. A few items for the commission's attention on page eighty-five of your packet. You'll notice that the 2007 Planners Institute is coming up on March 21st to the 23rd. That's in San Diego. This is an excellent seminar if you have not been to one before. So please contact Mary Seppi in the Community Development Department if you are interested in attending that institute. Second, I would like to draw your attention to page ninety-five of your packet. That's your schedule for upcoming hearings. And we are still planning on hearing several cases, in fact, four, at your February 12th meeting, including the teen center expansion, as well as two precise plans of design cases. I may note that currently, we don't have any cases scheduled for February 26th. That, of course, may change, but at this point, there's nothing scheduled on that date. And then finally, on page ninety-seven of your packet, I wanted to mention that the municipal code amendment relating to grading that you considered on November 13th of last year was approved by the council on January 9th. And another case which you heard and approved, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Storage Partners, is going to the city council on February 6th for consideration. And those are my reports.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Town. Any AB 1234 reports? No? Okay, we'll go to commission comments. No comments. I'll go back over to Mr. Town.
Thank you, Chair Fisher. I would like to adjourn tonight's planning commission meeting in memory of Ante Sizgoric, Jr., son of Community Development Department employee Alicia Ware, and stepson of Community Development Department employee Jeff Ware. Ante was twenty years old and a student at Ventura College, and will be deeply missed by his family and many friends.
Okay. We'll adjourn in memory to the February 12th, 2007 meeting at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Make me stop right now. Right there, just do our property, I need you to turn me back there.
Yeah, he is right there.
Justin, put everybody back up!
Hello, I'm Captain Mark Science from Ventura County Fire Department. Be sure to watch First on Scene here at T O TV on Channel 10, Fridays at noon and at 8 p.m., and on Saturdays and Sundays at 2 and 8 p.m., or anytime, online at www.toaks.org.
...